Yeah, I saw it too much, huh?
Well, they hit that ledge, the lane there.
I'm trying to figure out how that, I want to wait.
Exactly, you can just see it on the side of the road.
Good point.
They blasted what the road is.
Yeah?
Yeah.
But I don't know how, I don't know how that came up, didn't they start? We're good to go. Alrighty, welcome to the December 11th New Market Planning Board meeting. Would you please, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is public comments. Hearing none, I will close the public comment section. Next is review and approval of minutes of November 13th. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second?
Gretchen or can?
Gretchen.
Gretchen. Is there a second?
I heard the voice from over there. It was.
Oh, yes. Good point.
Second, who's second then? Delete it. Okay. You're gonna appoint some members?
I will, yes, I'm gonna appoint members.
You need second? Get in on hold.
So Janet, Rosa, Jane Ford, and Sarah Finch are not here tonight, so Michael and Daniel will be appointed to sit in. So, back to that, is there a second?
Second?
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it unanimously, thank you. Now onto regular business. First is continuation of a public hearing for an application for a site plan review at 81 Exeter Road, tax map view three, lot 137 in the B1 zone. The proposal is to remove the existing buildings and driveways and build a 2,920 square foot two-story mixed-use building with associated parking, lighting, and drainage. I see the applicant is here, but before you speak, I'd like to, Ms. Hardy, could you walk us through what's occurred since the last meeting and where we are?
Does everybody have a copy of my memo? Product test, dated assembly letter. First paragraph, we have sort of an overview of where we've been. The application was first accepted and we had our first public hearing on June 12th. And since then, there have been five iterations of the plans. And we received comments from Underwood engineers and the developers, engineers who are working on the project. And as we started the review of the plans, stormwater management emerged as a major design issue that needed to be addressed given the extent of wetlands on the site, the high water table, and the newness of the technique for porous pavement. And greater detail was required for the engineers to review the plans. And as a result, there was a major overhaul and change in the engineer who they were working with. So there was a new set of plans that came in, which were much more detailed and specific. And the process moved along from there. At this point, I received a memo from Underwood engineers at 5:00 this afternoon with review number six, which is basically they are satisfied with the status of the plans as such. There's one comment that they felt was not adequately addressed and that has to do with the concrete dumpster pads and the location. And the engineer was hoping that they would raise the elevation of the pads so it wouldn't interfere with the runoff. And so they were asking that that be revised and they're looking for some spot elevation so that they can do an evaluation of it. So that's one of their first comments of substance related to the review set. As part of this review, there was an alternative design that was presented for stormwater system, which is a more traditional system where there's paving and curbing provided runoff to a detention basin. And the engineers did provide us with an alternative plan for that. In the event that there would be a failure of the existing system, that that plan could be implemented and could address the stormwater issues. And there was a lot of discussion that we had back and forth on that design. And I think at this point, the engineer is satisfied with the design, but there were some recommendations for, that we get some information on how the cellar, your tech, correct, cell tech system will be maintained and what the maintenance schedule will be. And we've asked Mr. DeWitt to provide us with some information. He got back to me today with some, but there's some additional information that we're still waiting for. So we'd like to ask that that information be provided to our engineer for final review as a condition. Also, given the newness of the technology, there's a recommendation from the engineer, and which I agree with, that there be some kind of bond posted to provide a performance guarantee that the cell tech system will perform as it is designed. And that if, in the event it fails, that there is money available to implement the alternative parking design plan. And we had their engineer provide us with a cost estimate and they've established about a $41,000 amount to replace that system with the new system in the event of a failure. So the recommendation would be that there would be a bond to cover the cost in the full amount of renovations, which we do have cost estimates for. The second thing that we had talked about was the need for possibly a maintenance bond. And as you know, these new stormwater systems work great, porous pavement and so forth, provided they're properly maintained. And it doesn't require just the standard maintenance, specialized maintenance, vacuuming, and so forth. And I'm looking at Dan over there, because he probably has more experience than I am with what's involved in doing that. But we did discuss this with legal counsel and the recommendation has been stated that a bond for up to 50% of the value of the maintenance work over the course of a two-year period be provided to provide some flexibility in the event that it isn't maintained accordingly and it's not functioning the way it's intended. So those recommendations are detailed in my memo as well. And we can talk more about those, but that's what the Underwood report is at this point. Other than that, they have satisfied the requirements with that exception, with the exceptions I've noted.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeWitt, is there anything you'd like to add?
Sure. Great. Thanks everyone for taking the time to review this and there's a lot of information drawn throughout the process. But I do wanna ask about which staff recommendation, which number, letter P? Are there no value assigned to that?
And the way that works, and we require that there be escrow set aside for construction engineers throughout the course of the project. The way that usually works is we ask for an estimate from our review engineer, and as you know, we work with Underwood. And they give us an estimate on how much it would cost for site inspections over the course of the project. And we can make that estimate available to you, but the idea is that that money would be provided to the town upfront to be deposited into our escrow account and used on a designated basis for those inspections. The smoother the construction, the shorter the time, obviously the lower the cost will be for that service.
So based on your experience, do you have sort of a broad range?
It's hard to say, because we have projects ranging from the industrial park, we have 24,000 square foot industrial buildings, to maintenance of, you know, the roadways and the, oh, the golf course. But we recently did a small subdivision, it was about $5,000 was the review up at Boulder Brook.
Which is significantly more work than you have.
That's putting in a road.
That's putting in a road.
That's putting in a road, which is a.
What they do is they check in, whoever your contractor is, if they have a good relationship with Underwood, Underwood will only come out when they need to, to inspect gravel, compaction, things like that. They're not there eight hours a day. So it's all about planning.
Yeah, we, you know, at certain intervals, should we contact them to let them know that such and such is ready for inspection.
Okay.
It's really, it's to inspect that they're in compliance with the new plans.
That is correct.
That it's being built, specification.
Correct. And that's all written in detail and the developers agree.
Okay. And then again, too, on C, there's no value assigned there?
For impact fees? And the reason for that is part of your project is commercial, office use. And at this point, you don't, I think you're gonna be locating it, but we don't know who the tenants are. And the cost for water and sewer impact fees is based on the average daily flows that are anticipated by that use. And it could change depending upon who your tenants are. So we have found that for commercial uses, it's easier to establish those costs once we know who the tenant is and we can do the analysis to really nail down what the cost would be. I can give you a range and I can give you what the per gallon per day figure is. And that's, I don't have it right with me, but I can send that over to you. But for the residential, it's more straightforward, it's based on the number of bedrooms and the type of unit.
Gotcha. Okay. Is that something you and Mike Hoffman worked together on, or is?
We implemented and enforced it.
Yeah, right.
The rates having changed since Bruce Mayberry did the original impact fee program back in 2000, was it 2001 Valerie or around at that point? And so the rates haven't increased and.
No, but do you, is it you and Mike get together and agree on what the usage is, gallon per day?
Actually, it's not me and Mike, it's me and the engineer.
You and the engineer, okay.
Right.
They have to be paid before occupancy permit issued by.
Before the CEO, okay, that's right.
But the planning board as part of its approval will establish that, yes, they have to be paid for the project. And there are provisions in our town ordinances for waivers for certain impact fees. Let's say you're making some kind of off-site improvement that has value and that could be a waiver against the impact fee due.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess I'd just like to talk a little bit more about H, the request to hold the money. So, you know, to me that looks maybe $55,000.
It was 40, oh, as far as the full amount? I don't know what the, we need to figure out what's gonna cost to maintain it and we need to have some data from, that's why we wanted to have the stormwater operation and maintenance plan so that we would know what would be involved with that.
Clarification question. So you have a time period, 24 months for the bonding.
For the performance.
So what would the, how many months, my question is how, how many months for the maintenance?
That's a good question. I would say I've seen it any number of ways, but I would say two years, if that's the figure we agreed to.
From completion of construction or from?
Completion of, no, completion of construction, certificate of occupancy.
Right, so yeah.
Just to make sure that it's, it's working.
Yeah, so I guess, are we double accounting on this? Because if something fails in two years, if it's not maintained, then we're gonna exercise the right to have the other system put in?
That's the performance guarantee.
Okay.
The second is to assure that the maintenance gets done. And it may be in the case of the latter, that maybe it's not a full failure of the system. Maybe it's just that it needs an additional sweeping or something to, I don't know if you can unclog the porous pavement. Again, not a technical person, but.
Well, this isn't porous pavement, though, I'd like to point out. I know there's been issues with systems where there's pavers and then there's gaps between the pavers and those gaps fill up with sand. This is system, the entire thing is basically permeable. It's just sort of like a, it's just crushed rock. It's just held together with a grid that distributes the weight laterally. So I don't see that as being, you know, so much of a problem with this system. But just back to the amount, we're probably still talking about $50,000 being locked up for two years. And just based on my preliminary numbers, you know, that may push the, that, the whole system just to be foregone and go into the more traditional route, which, you know, for me, you know, going into what a lot of scientists think is the new future, and especially being a Seacoast town, I mean, I think the system is a good, good way for New Mark to sort of be a leader, you know, and have something new that works. So I'm just, that's my worry with it. And at the TRC meeting, we had talked about maybe 10% of this number being locked up, but.
Can I say something of the form of, there are different forms of performance guarantees. One of them is a letter of credit, which, you're correct, that's how it works. You have funds in a bank and basically there's 40,000, whatever the case may be, dollars set aside and, you know, it would be a letter of credit that the town could draw upon in event there was a failure. There's also a performance bond, which isn't the preferred alternative municipalities, because there's a lot involved in calling bonds. I've been there, one of them, and it was kind of a nightmare, but anyway, be that as it may. The cost of a maintenance bond, from what I understand, for, you know, like a AAA bond, is much less than the cost of a letter of credit. And I confirm this not only with my legal counsel today, but also our facilities person who does a lot of this, you know, construction bonding type work. And he said, Greg Miles said that, let's say if it was 50%, it would be 50% of the 40, $20,000. He said the cost for a performance bond, if you have good credit, which we assume that's the case, you know, would be somewhere in the order, and I'm quoting him now, I didn't look up the amount, $850. If it was 100%, it would be, you know, $1,600. So it's not as expensive as, you know, tying up your funds if you have the ability to get the bond.
So you're saying that this $40,000 translates into an actual cost to me of $800?
That's what I was told today. And of course, the safe route would be for you to contact your insurance company and see what their cost would be.
Okay. Can I?
Yeah, it's very similar to buying an insurance policy.
Can I ask a question, though? I think Val started this. I have, the very first sentence where it's 100% performance guarantee for the stormwater management system to assure timely and proper construction and proper maintenance. The performance guarantee is usually for construction, right? And the maintenance guarantee is gonna be for maintenance?
Municipalities use maintenance bonds typically at a construction contract where, you know, it might be a project where there's a lot, it needs to be stabilization, erosion control, and establishing a formal gravel pit, that's a good example. And you don't know if it's, how long that's gonna take, you wanna have some money in place. I was always led to believe that it was less than a full amount of the construction, that it was a percentage. And I've seen it in some communities, 30%.
Well, and the reason I guess I'm asking, Dan is.
So it varies, so I'm not.
Sure, I understand.
The amount could be any percentage that this board feels is warranted, so.
I understand, I'm just.
And again, I'm not, I'm just sharing what I know about them.
And I'm just trying to, to understand that, based on this, and I think Val said earlier, it looks like we're, we're getting a maintenance bond twice.
Well, 'cause my point, maybe I didn't explain it as clearly as I probably could have. If the trigger on the time is from occupancy permit as to the two-year periods.
Right.
If it fails within the two-year period, the town can exercise its right to have the cell tech replaced with the traditional pavement and detention pond. So.
With the performance.
With however it's bonded, okay? That whole, the whole, the cell tech is determined that it doesn't work. So the mandate under the site plan review is that the system will be replaced with the traditional parking and detention alternative design. It's up to the, I would think, who the applicant to make sure that system, that the cell tech is maintained over the two-year period so that the town isn't stepping in and having this, having him just expend, you know, 40 something thousand dollars on your system. So I don't, to me, I think that we're putting a double burden on the applicant to, oh, we want money to make sure you maintain it. And, oh, by the way, you're gonna maintain it, but even if it doesn't work, you're gonna replace it. Because he has to maintain it, otherwise he is gonna have to replace it if it doesn't work.
Right, and we also have the authority under our cease and desist and enforcement requirements. If the stormwater system that's in place fails, then it becomes an enforcement matter. And, but it's really, the bond is protection to him in a sense, that it's giving him insurance that that won't happen.
Right, well, the performance bond, though, is usually to ensure the construction gets done properly.
That's right.
Right?
But this is to ensure that it works.
And the 4,900, is that make sure that alternative design?
You can call it what you want, but it's, it's a bond, it's basically the same thing.
Right.
It's a bond, it's an insurance, it's to assure that it performs.
Well, I would think that our avenue, if the system fails, our avenue would be through Mike Hoffman's office, right, for enforcement.
Well, Greg's gonna do it.
Well, he would send out, he doesn't do the legal work, but he would send out a cease and desist order and then it would be turned over to our town attorney.
The cell tech doesn't work, you're gonna replace it with the alternative system because that was the, that was the conditions of the site plan review.
Right.
That could be one venue.
Right.
I tend to agree that it's kind of overkill when I spoke with Ben about it, I didn't really see that was necessary. What's important is that we have some means to make it right if it isn't.
Well, that's why we require the alternative design as opposed to wishing forward to just a pervious pavement from the get-go and then you might have a maintenance bond for two years.
We require the alternative plan, but it needs to be a means by which we can enforce to get that.
No, I agree with that. My point being is if it's, if it's a two-year failure because he doesn't maintain it, right? We're not gonna step in and say, well, you're not maintaining it.
But it was explained to me that these systems, though, it's not, this is the attorney who's explaining it to me, that it's not like a road bond where after a year, after two years, if it's not, if it's gonna fail, you can readily see. And he was even suggesting, well, maybe it's more than two years, that it needs to be more in the order of three to five years. And, you know, that's something we didn't have time to research.
And my, so here's, here's my concern of the thing, is that it's in anybody's best interest, I mean, I like the idea of a new kind of technology. I like trying stuff because we've gotta do something with stormwater. You install it as per directions and for some reason it doesn't work, through no fault of, whatever. We, the town, are certainly not going onto that property and fixing it.
No, and that was not recommended.
Whether we have a bond or not. The bond doesn't give us permission to go on his property. It gives us permission, the site plan to shut him down.
Right.
You know, so the bond is really not.
But the bond gives him the money so that he can correct it and repair it. So it's protecting him as well as the town, and that's.
And the tenants.
And the tenants and, and the public at large are in a bother who might be impacted.
Right, right. But so, I was gonna say, though, was following up on that, is that typically, when you do things, when I do things like this, you look at what's the, what's the chances of it failing? You put, you associate a value to it, you know, if you're. You put, you associate a value to it, you know, if you're, is this a, it's forty thousand dollars, is there a twenty-five percent chance it's gonna fail? Is there a fifty percent chance it's gonna fail? Is there a zero percent or a hundred percent? I don't think any of us know at this point.
Can I speak to the third system that we looked at? So we looked at under, um, pavement, storage basements, uh, basins, which are plastic, big plastic tanks. But all around them is the same exact stone, basically what we're proposing to use here. And that system relies on the water hitting the pavement, going over to a drain, going down the drain, through a tube, into big chambers, and then infiltrating through the same basic rock that is specified for this design. This design eliminates all those tubes, all that travel of the water, and the water just hits and sinks in. But it's basically the same rocks. So for me, I, I mean, do, do performance bonds, are they required for those underground chambers?
Possibly, yeah.
Possibly.
That's what was referred to the Cheney application, the depot.
Yep, yep, yep.
But this system is less complicated than that.
Right. And we see, and I guess my point is that I'd rather make sure we have enough money to protect ourselves. And if the applicant doesn't have enough money to fix it, then they get shut down. That's easier said than done.
Right.
But, but what's that number? Is it?
It seems. Well, what's the, you have to do a risk analysis, and that's why insurance companies are, that's what they do to come up with amounts for insurance.
Right. Right, absolutely. Absolutely.
None of us here have that ability.
No, I agree, I agree. Go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
It seems requiring an applicant to bond for reconstruction of the site is not required if you require them to bond for maintenance. So if they're properly maintaining it, you're not gonna have to rebuild it.
Right.
And if it wasn't designed properly, there's other alternatives to mitigating that issue.
Yeah, I mean, historically, we've never told anybody that you have to bond just in case your system fails.
Private property.
Right.
You bond, you, we bond for the construction to make sure it works, and then, then they own it. I see what you're saying.
And.
It is.
That's a.
It's designed by an engineer who's stamping the plan.
That's an interesting.
And, and isn't the recourse of the town a cease and desist?
Yes.
I mean, that's a pretty heavy recourse, especially when the winter's involved.
Well, but sometimes as a practical matter, you don't wanna go that route. You wanna be able to work collaboratively with property owner to get the problem fixed. And I think the option of having a maintenance bond provides that.
As opposed to both bonds.
Right.
I think is what I heard Bill say, and I'm in agreement with that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Right.
So, I mean, it doesn't quite matter really what you call it, just what it's for, is the intent.
Well, the, actually, what matters, I think, is how much money it is.
Right, that's what I'm.
Well, and we know that to build this replacement system according to the engi- his engineer's cost estimates, about forty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, what I, and I, I guess I didn't speak very clearly. I, I think bonding to build a alternate system is overkill. I think bonding to maintain the design system, I think is appropriate. That's just my.
I mean, that's, that's what we wanted to discuss it.
And we, and, and, right, and we can determine what we think the amount of that bond should be for maintenance, even though we're throwing tires.
But, yeah, I have no idea what it costs to maintain.
I mean, I think Dover had thirty percent for maintenance bonds at one point. I don't know if they still do that. And that's, actually, I, I'm looking over at Dan because I've been in touch with the assistance that he engineer in Exeter. And we talked about, you know, what her community, your community over in Exeter, what they do. And I wasn't able to talk to the planner who, um, has in the past, I guess, recommended maintenance bonds for various projects. So unfortunately, I didn't get the information to be able to, you know, shed light on that issue.
So we're looking for a benchmark to figure out that?
Well, yeah, I mean, what, what's.
Well, what's, what's reasonable?
What's reasonable? Ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, fifty percent?
See, I have to.
Of, of the cost to replace that system.
Right, well, after thinking about it with what, what Bill said, um, it, it makes sense. I mean, if this was just a, a normal parking lot, if he was just built, if he was gonna spend the forty thousand dollars or forty-one thousand dollars, we wouldn't then say, now give us a, a bond in case it fails for forty-one thousand dollars. We're doing it in this case, cause it's a, we're talking about it, because it's a unique thing. I think Bill has convinced me that just, I think just a maintenance bond is probably the proper thing to make sure he does the proper maintenance.
Me too.
And to what, to what value is that? I don't.
And.
Right, you, you need to have enough money to be able to, you know.
Make sure.
To make sure he maintains it.
Correct the problem that resulted from the so-called lack of maintenance, if in fact that happened.
So that was, that was my question, are we trying to think of something comparable to come up with that number?
I think we should let the engineers come up with what a reasonable price is, whether that's under, under word and Ekman putting their heads together on what's it gonna cost annually to maintain the system.
Yes. Right.
And that was part of the reason we were asking for the, um, operation maintenance plan. You don't know what you have to do, then you really can't cost that out.
Right.
Um, I'm wondering if our facility manager might be able to provide some assistance to us in establishing that.
I mean, I can work with him to come up with a.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm fine with that. I think we, we just leave it as, as a, a maintenance bond, the amount to be agreed upon between the applicant and the town. I think that's a reasonable. You guys?
One thing that I wanted to mention, so, um, when we talk about failing, failing of the system, like, are we talking about, cause we're talking about a system that's close to wetlands. So what if failing means that there would be water pollution?
Yeah. Could be.
Could be.
Who would actually gum and measure something like that? You know, if it's failing.
Well, as part of the, the O and M plan, we're expecting that the applicant will do some inspections of the system and provide some report reports to us.
Okay.
And if there is a failure, they need to notify, um, Department of Environmental Services because they have jurisdiction of the wetlands and pollution of wetlands.
If it fails, there'll be a puddle.
Same.
Basically.
And the phone.
And it'll run off.
Right.
But it's designed to withstand, I actually think, the town's regulation is a fifty-year storm event. I think we went as far as a hundred years on this. I'll have to check that, but it's definitely.
It's, the structures are supposed to be designed.
And that's instantaneous rainfall. I think, what is it, seven point two inches or something?
It's sev- roughly seven and a half inches in twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
So by failing, you're saying that not everything is infiltrated into the ground, some of it, the excess water might enter the, the wetland? That's, um.
Yeah, it would fail if we had a fifty-year storm event and the water didn't infiltrate at the rate it was supposed to.
Mm-hmm. Sure, for me, it's still not completely failing the system because we don't know what water is coming into, from the system into the wetlands. So it may not be polluted anyhow, so it may not be any kind of impact, but that's a different issue.
It depends.
Correct, it's a different issue, but you're right.
It's for effort to maintain.
Yeah.
Just because water would be going in the wind doesn't mean it would be polluted, but, but the intent is to stop that, so, I agree.
Doesn't mean it's. Mm-hmm.
So do we have consensus on?
As part of PTAP, did, will that have to be, the, or a maintenance plan have to be submitted for this project?
No, because PTAP is, is not only MS four, we are under an administrative order from D, EPA with respect to our wastewater treatment plant, and also we have to do diligence with respect to stormwater. So all developments that come before the town, we have to report that information to, um, to EPA. And the next part of that is doing the accounting, how much, you know, if you increase the impervious surface and you add a BNP, what does that translate into in terms of enhancement of water quality? And, um, so we have to provide that information on all projects in the market, and you, you do as well in Exeter. So PTAP is, is brought to include nitrogen loading as well as MS four loadings of other pollutants. Does that make sense?
So that was a thirty percent maintenance bond?
I think it's to be determined.
Oh, no, to be determined.
Okay.
Mount to be determined with, with you and your engineer and our engineer and.
Okay, so this board doesn't wanna give a percentage at this point? Okay.
No, I think whatever they think is reasonable for you.
Or a dollar amount? Okay, so.
Can I read something?
Sure.
Sure. Will probably go as a, as an amendment to this?
Okay.
Sure. So under each performance and maintenance guarantees, the applicant shall post, um, a performance guarantee for the stormwater management system to assure timely and proper construction and proper maintenance of the system in the amount to be agreed upon between the applicant and town administrator for a period of twenty-four months. This performance guarantee shall be posted prior to the execution recording of the plan. And these guarantees shall be in the form of a self-executing letter of credit performance warrant cashier acceptable to the town's legal counsel.
Or bond, right.
Oh, no, sorry, I meant for a period of twenty-four months after completion of the stormwater, stormwater management system. So the twenty-four months should really start after completion of the system.
After completion of the system, yep.
After completion. Cause the, I, I mean, he can build it and we're really trying to protect the wa- wetlands and he may not have occupancy permits.
Right.
So it's upon completion of the system, so if he doesn't have occupancy.
Yeah, so a two-year. Yeah, it's cost to perform the system.
That system will probably be the, very close to the last thing they do. So there's no sense, you know, it could take you two years to build it, and you have no sense of starting that before he's done with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, what about the next?
No, I, I, I deleted everything else in that whole.
In the whole paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to keep the language that the guarantee can be in the form of a larger credit performance guarantee.
Yeah, I read that.
Yeah, she read that.
The guarantee shall be in the form.
To the town's legal counsel.
Yeah, I read that.
Okay, thank you.
Self-executing letter of credit performance warrant cashier.
Yep.
Okay. Can we go back to the timeline for a moment?
Sure.
I'm okay, I, I'm on board with all of what we just discussed with the one bond versus the two and the maintenance. But with the performance of it being weather-based, I really don't think twenty-four months is long enough. I, I would advocate for making it be the, the longer time period of some sort.
Okay, why, why, what's your thoughts behind that? Why is twenty-four months not enough?
Because it may not. Because weather changes so often.
We have a drought.
And it may not during drought, but not during a period of five, twelve months.
It, it just may not be long enough to get a, a good enough long-term gauge.
That's a good point, particularly if we make it from completion of the system as opposed to occupancy permit.
When I was talking to Radigan, he threw out three to five years. I don't know why I said that, but I think that might be something that we'll do some research on.
I think if we're conceivably talking about an eight hundred dollar investment, three to five years may not be an issue.
Well, it wasn't clear if that's eight hundred dollars a year or.
A week.
A week. He did say eight hundred.
No, but it also depends on.
Again, you need to do some research yourself on that.
The financial backing and assets that are being forged against.
So you're suggesting a longer timeframe, Jamie?
Yes.
I think that makes sense myself because it, it is so invariable when you.
From year to year, it can change.
Yeah, in my experience with bonds, they were a five-year time period.
Oh, really?
But I'm sure that changes depending on the purpose of it.
In what context?
Brokers' errors and omissions insurance.
Air emissions insurance.
Uh, broken, brokers' errors and omissions insurance.
Oh, errors and omissions insurance, okay. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if the applicant can't work out something with town administrator, or they can come back before the planning board, correct?
Oh, yeah, and, and John, um, Radigan offered to come to the board and talk generally about performance guarantees and different options and how they work.
Have you ever tried to get a bond before?
No, I haven't.
Have fun.
Well, that's what I, you know, for, you have to have a track record.
That's.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a valid thing, that, I said, that if there's, if there's issues with getting a bond or something, then.
Right, that you're gonna end up basically sending the money into escrow.
Yes.
Yes.
So you end up having to lock up the money.
Whether it's.
In escrow.
Right, whether it's physically there or conceptually locked up, it's.
If there are issues with that, you can always come back and talk to us.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you wanna hold up a vote on that.
No, no.
You don't think you what?
No.
I don't, I don't think it makes sense for the applicant to want us to hold up a vote.
To resolve that.
To resolve that.
Oh, okay, yes.
Just, um.
I'm gonna hear what you said.
So, Mr. Dewitt, do you have anything else to?
Um, no, I think, um, no, anything else is.
Okay.
Is everybody in agreement with the timeframe that Jamie suggested, or are we still?
I think we're gonna talk about it still.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. So, um, what, let's talk about the bond. What, what's everybody think? Timeframe?
I think there's some logic to, um, to having an extended period because, you know, if, if you're trying to find out, will this be able to handle a fifty-year storm event? Cause it's designed, you may not get that in the first two years.
Yeah?
I would agree with that.
But also, isn't every system designed to be for a fifty-year storm event?
Yes.
Yes, I don't have my book in front of me, but I think that was what the premise of the stormwater regulations, I mean, the stormwater study was.
Well, the thing is, is that, yes, this system is designed the same, to handle the same volume of stormwater as any other system in town. Whether it's fifty years, a hundred years.
I'm just trying personally to put like, the least amount of restrictions on this to make the possibility of making it happen.
Understood. Understood, understood.
Do you have a record issue?
Dan, what do you think?
For time.
We'll defer to Dan.
Uh, it's definitely, I understand what you mean by, obviously, we, I would promote to have this project, uh, constructed, uh, but, yeah, the five-year idea, I agree with that.
Now, that and Gretchen, Mikail.
So I, I guess my question would be, since we are kind of, the applicant may come back to us, depending on what he can obtain, right? So can we kind of wait, if we'd like to be more lenient on that to help the project go forward? And we think it's okay to do that?
Well, I was gonna offer, I was gonna offer a, a different alternative.
Go, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if, if people are coming with five years, five years, or until we have two twenty-five-year storm events or and, and, and the system is functioning properly afterwards.
Yeah. Sure.
You know, which is.
So you could change it if we have the events.
Let the applicant come back to get the bond released.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if that, that gets us to, that would get us to that, cause I mean, we could have two major storms a month after it opens, you know, the way the weather's been.
I can work with that.
Well, you could have two hundred-year storms like we did in two thousand six, two thousand seven.
Yeah.
Yes, that's happened before.
Which is gonna fail the whole thing, which is gonna design that.
And I, I note that my property didn't flood during that event, the wetlands swelled up, but it didn't.
Right.
Yeah, but down, downstream did in the mobile home park, big time.
Right. And, and I, I said twenty-five instead of fifty, cause I, 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 you know, I think waiting for a fifty-year storm may be waiting, and waiting, and waiting, so.
About to exceed that.
Yeah.
So can an applicant come before the board at any time to request the, a bond to be waived if it's already a condition of approval? Or does that, do we have to give them the right within the condition of approval?
It would be, it would have to be a condition of approval, and if at some point.
And then give them the right to come back?
Circumstances change, then they need to have the condition revisited by the board, whatever the case may be. Yeah, after a public hearing, you can have them come back and discuss with the board and you can change it.
A modification.
So are there any unique features of the system, why it might fail compared to other, is it, is this as unique as, like, like, I guess there are projects that are similar, right? So it's not like cutting-edge design?
No, there are three different companies making the same system, so.
Yeah, okay. So, it's proven that it, if it's maintained properly, it wouldn't fail?
Mm-hmm.
How long's it been out?
I'm not sure of the exact timing.
There's too many of those.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's used in a lot of different ways. It's used, um, as a base material for porous pavers, or it's used, um, some people put grass over it. Um, and it just, it's, it's used in a lot of applications. So when you put grass over it, you put a geofex-style fabric so that the soil doesn't co-mingle, but it still has the holding capacity. Basically, it's, it's relying on the voids in the rock between, so if you can imagine just a big pile of rock, there's air spaces between all of those rocks.
Hmm.
And that's what is holding the water, and that's all been calculated by the engineer.
Yeah, it's nothing super fancy.
No, no, really, it's.
It's just voids and rock and voids.
They, they're only.
The voids don't fill up with sand, right?
Right.
Right, that, that was one of the things we were talking about in the operation and maintenance, um, that I wouldn't actually use sand on it. The purpose of sand is to provide grit on pavement because of pavement. The purpose of sand is to provide grit on pavement because the pavement's slick. This already has a grit, so as long as the snow melts, then, then it's, you know, you don't need the sand. The only concern that Greg had was by the entrance, so from Exeter Road, some sand coming down. So part of the operation and maintenance will be to scoop that up and sift it out and replace it. But as part of the business plan, you know, I am looking, and of course this could change, to get a tractor, and that would be something that would be done on-site, so.
Yeah, and you'll have vehicles in the parking lot with sand on them, but, yeah, it's a, it's a maintenance thing, you have to maintain it appropriately.
Yeah, it's not like, it's not like the pavers, which are just concrete pads that have a gap between them, and that ga- gap fills up with sand, and you have to vacuum it out like a rug. It's, it's not like that, so.
All right, so we.
Okay.
Probably beat this to death. Are we five years or? Well, we've had, I'm gonna throw off for discussion, two twenty-five-year storms?
Yeah, we're.
Just do sixty months, yeah. And then let's just add that, you know, the applicant may come before the board prior to the expiration of the sixty-month period to request the bor- bond be released if sufficient evidence is provided to justify saying. So it's, the burden's on the.
Typically, that's done at an administrative level, like you were saying, do you have a.
Oh, that's fine.
Come out to the board.
That's even easier.
Yeah.
Do it at an administrative level.
If they can come forward and show us, if you want to use that twenty-five-year storm two years in a row, just come in, show us the, the evidence of that, and then we.
Two events.
Right.
Could be two weeks apart, could be six months apart, or a year apart, or.
Is there some, is there somewhere in Newmarket where that's measured?
Never happened in five years. There's a gauging station in Durham.
Yeah, I think that, I think, to.
Is it Wiswoldian?
I believe so. There's a gauging station for a bond, I think it is in Durham.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, it's at the DMA Pierce.
Dana Storm.
USGS, stormwater gauging system.
Yeah.
What's that?
For Rena website, they have all that information on there, is that a different?
I think they might, yeah.
There is Storm Water Center at UNH as well, which is a little further, but they, they have lots, they measure lots of parameters about stormwater, so.
She has.
That's what they probably do too.
Yeah.
Okay, if Mr. Dewitt has nothing else, um, I.
Well, I, I still would prefer I have to put a percent on it, but.
Is that the other?
You're gonna negotiate that with the town.
Okay, okay.
You, you convince somebody you think you need to pay to maintain it every year, that's what, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, and our regulations do reference negotiations between the town administrator and the developer.
I, I think that's.
It's really not a planning board.
Better than just us picking a number, arbitrary number, if you, if you bring the paperwork in, say, hey, I have a contract here, and these people are gonna maintain it for a thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
That's, that's proof right there.
Yeah.
As, as opposed to us picking a number that may be ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that makes more sense, I agree with Eric here.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna, if there's no objections, close the public hearing. So the public hearing is closed.
Do you want to talk about the rest of my recommendations?
Um, well, I was gonna flip to the back and say, let the board know that.
Just waivers, okay.
We should, we need to do a special permit, and we need to, we need to talk about waivers. Um, so I'm recommending everybody turn to page four, and we'll talk about the special use permit first.
Okay, yeah. Let's do go to the Conservation Commission on two separate occasions. We have minutes here if you want to read them. And they did vote at their June fourteenth meeting to provide a letter of support to Mr. Dewitt for his project. And, um, we have a letter from the chairman, which I provided a copy to all of you. And basically, they're saying that they are not opposed to the project, and they feel that the proposal meets the criteria of yield for a special use permit. Because it's not within a hundred fifty feet of Great Bay, the Limpree River, the Skasik River, and all its birth. And they did not feel that it required any kind of a mitigation plan, because it was felt that it complied with the spirit and the, um, intent of the, the ordinance. So, given that information, I have recommended that, um, the planning board grant the special use permit, uh, for the wetlands buffer impacts related to very poorly and poorly drained soils. And, um.
Okay, so does any.
I guess that might suggest a, a motion.
Is there, does anybody have any questions on that? With comments, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, yes, I just wanted to kind of get clarity on the letter from December tenth about, does that in any way overlap with the, the request to allow the parking spaces? Does that change it?
No.
Okay, I wasn't sure, okay. There's, there's a setback requirement for waivers.
Yes.
That's not the same one, this is, because it's close to the wetland, and. Okay.
That'll be one, taking up another waivers, yes.
Two separate things, they don't overlap.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the special use permit to, um, allow encroachment on the fifty-foot buffer requirements for poor, very poorly drained soils and twenty-five-foot buffer requirements for the poorly drained soils. Uh, under section thirty-two dash one fifty-five, as the board has, as the, um, as all of the conditions have been met. For the application, um, at eighty-one Exeter Road, tax map U three, lot one thirty-seven, the E one zone.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now on to waivers, so there are three requests for waivers, which start at the bottom of page three in, um, the staff memo. Any questions on the first waiver?
I do, I have a couple of questions on the first waiver. So, when you count your required parking spaces. Do you include in your count, in your total handicap spaces?
Yes.
So if those spaces are not being used, you don't have that number of spaces available?
If they are not being used?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, that's okay. And, um, shared parking, um, you get a credit here of six spaces, that's something that's in the, in the parking standards, it says if you share it. And so we have restaurant use and residential use, so how does shared parking work in the evening?
Because of the hours of operation and when the tenants would be coming.
So what is, what is the hours of operation of a restaurant?
I guess I would ask the applicant to defend the question, I believe, and is, a methodology is provided in the.
It's been a while since I did that, and looked at it with, um, the previous engineer, but it's, it's based on hours, and it's based on, um, people in residential are expected to be at work during the day. And then the other calculation was the other business, which was a day business, so those spaces get shared, and that's a whole formula that's calculated out.
So is the proposal no longer for a restaurant?
No, it, it is, but it's, but, well, the proposal is for a mixed use with flexible space on the first floor to be used by, um, businesses that are allowed within the, um.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Mr., but if it were a restaurant, and it was open in the evening, how does shared space with residential work?
That is taken into account.
No, I'm asking, how, I don't understand how that works.
Well, those, there would be less of a credit during that hour, so there, there is, I think the day is broken up into three time slots. Um, and you get a different percentage for each time slot.
Okay.
Under the calculation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are you proposing to have, um, assigned parking for your tenants?
Yes.
Anybody have any other questions? Bill, you satisfied?
Yes.
If nobody has any other questions, I'll entertain a motion for the first waiver.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question's made in second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Onto the second waiver. Is there any, anybody have any questions on the, the second waiver? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes seven to zero. And lastly, onto waiver number three. Any board members have questions on waiver number three? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Just for edification, it's really waiver number one under Diane's memo.
Oh, um, yep, yep, I'm sorry, go backwards. Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. And then lastly, I'll entertain a motion, um, for approval, as outlined in Diane's, Ms. Hardy's, um, memo, and as amended in the previous discussion.
You're looking for a motion? So moved.
Is there a second?
Is that with the amendment to the?
Do you want to read your amendment for clarity's sake?
Do you want to read, do you want to read it again?
Want me to read it again, or just do it, just send it to you?
No, why'd you just send, why'd you send it to her?
You're gonna send it to?
Yeah, so the only change would be that it would be with the town, with the, um, planning administr- county administrator versus the board, coming back to the board.
County administrator.
Yep.
I think I have everything good now, thank you.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Dewitt, what is, when did DOT receive the driveway application?
Uh, I would have to go back.
Ballpark. June, July, August.
She's on that thing.
Yeah, around then, and they asked for additional information, um, which was provided to them. Um, and then I think one other time, a third time, they asked for more information, and that was in the form of drawing and cross-sections, um, having to do with the slope of the road. And the last I heard, I think it was Kerry, Kerry Locke, maybe, uh, maybe not, um, he liked everything he saw and said it was going, it was all, all okay. And he was going to speak with, um, the town planner to provide some kind of letter or something.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
You'll get a permit. That's, that's how you know you win, you get a permit.
Yeah, oh, I know, yeah, I know.
Jim Hewitt was the person I spoke with a while ago. He just called and said it's still an active project, I said, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the two of them were on that email, I think.
By the way, the industrial park finally received their permit, it was submitted back in January, and they just got it last week.
I've heard rumors there may be a person, there may have been a recent personnel change over there.
Last summer, Kevin Russell, I think his name was, moved from District Six to headquarters in Concord.
So, any thoughts of when you may have that in hand?
Uh, it sounds like I just have to keep pushing for it, and, um, that's sort of what I do in my professional jobs, ask for things over and over.
He has six, six months to meet the conditions of approval.
It's off topic, but I would love it if the town could reach out to DOT in some official capacity and say, we're trying to be business-friendly here, and if it takes applicants six to nine months to get a permit, that's not helpful.
Valid point.
I think it's a good point, and I do know that in that last case, there was an outreach to the commissioner to help to expedite the permit law.
Valid point.
And the only other comment I have is on, on the, uh, plan set. There's an existing conditions plan with a block for planning board signature, and I'm not sure we would, we would be endorsing an existing conditions plan.
No, just the plan set, and what's recorded.
Just what's getting reported.
What gets reported, you're required to report.
Can you reply the, the, um.
The site gets rejected.
At any easement, I just. Site plan or any easement talkings?
I'd be happy to make a motion if I was voting to not require recording the site. But, um.
I second that motion.
And maybe, maybe just, um, a friendly pass on to your surveyor that he should be, um, monumenting your lot, you surveyed.
Mm-hmm.
So they have a lot.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
Okay, that, I think that's under, that, is that required under a site plan, monumentation?
To be reported, a monumentation, yeah, we need to have a boundary survey, it's based on monumentation.
I don't, I don't know if it's required, not on the regulations, I know it's required under state law.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Alrighty, anybody have anything else?
On this?
On this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, good luck.
Congratulations, thank you, Eric, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, we'll, and we'll talk tomorrow about DOT.
Yes, and I will share Mr. Dusset's comments with the town administrator about DOT.
In your memo, you talked about substantial completion.
I talked about what?
Sorry, I do, item, item J on page three.
Yeah.
The last sentence, maybe a copy from a prior.
Oh, yeah, um.
Yeah.
So take that out, we missed.
Yeah, I think.
The, the, just ends in the middle.
Yeah, I know, but I think the.
Because you addressed it.
You know what it, what it should say, and this is in our developers' agreement.
That's permanent.
That permanent investing occurs upon substantial completion of the building and site improvements.
Yes, okay.
So, something got cut off.
All right, we'll survive.
This happens, this happens.
All right, um, the next agenda item is continued till the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to continue that to the January meeting, I'm still trying to figure out how we may pay for this update.
No, I'm talking about, um, the Wiswells.
Oh, as well.
We don't need to actually continue that, it's not a public hearing, so.
No, but he will be back in January.
Sure, and then new and old business, um, does anybody have any newer old business, new business? Discussion master plan, Diane, you wanna talk about that the next meeting?
Yeah, I would like to talk about it the next meeting, and, Val, you had suggested maybe having a subcommittee get together and just look at what we have on the books and.
What I suggested was that we all, we get a matrix of, of everything.
Right, and I'm, I'm working on that.
And when it was last updated, and then also to denote which ones are actually required under state law.
Right. We have.
And then the additional ones that are now under the RSA that are, um, optional.
Okay.
So that we have just basically a one-page grid of what we have, what we actually need, when, where they, everything was last updated, and what items are, we don't have.
Okay.
And then to discuss that as a board to see, you know, really what do we want in our master plan, which chapters, and then prioritize from there.
How we take.
We'll take that up at the January meeting.
Okay. Unless anybody has anything to report.
I just, on the s- uh, Storm Water Committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday at four o'clock. I heard that from a few of you, I haven't heard that from you, Bill, and I didn't know if Valerie was gonna be coming in your stead, and I think Eric has a conflict.
I said maybe.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, but, as of now, I can make it, but who knows?
Okay, so I, I didn't know, are we gonna have a forum? Who's gonna be coming? Diane, Gretchen?
I, my intention is to be here.
Okay.
You mean downstairs, or?
We're gonna meet up here, four o'clock.
So who do you have going?
Is that, is that posted?
Okay, so we have, uh, no.
We can't have four, like, we need members.
No, we can't have four.
No, if we have a, if we have four, we have to post it, because it's.
Yeah, so I'm asking who's going, I'm just an alternate.
We have it.
Oh, so you're the, right, so if you don't want me to go, it's just for me.
Gretchen. No, no, Gretchen, Diane, and Bill or Val, because I think, Val, you were gonna be the alternate to Bill, so you guys get to fight it out.
No, I'm the alternate, so you're gonna go, so I'll be at the doctor's, so.
We'll make it really interesting.
Who else was showing up? Someone, we got one from Underwood.
Kyle, I'm told. Kyle is from the Planning Commission, we have his Conservation Commission representative, I think, Patrick, the chairman's gonna be sitting in on that, and, um, Underwood engineers. So, I think at one point, we were hoping to get maybe a developer.
A developer, we saw him.
We were going, not, not to be, serve on the committee, but to, to review once we come up with another draft, which, I spent a long time working, reworking the subdivision regulations, and, um, I've given those over to Kyle, who's looking at them, so we should have, get that, I will try. so we should have, get that, I will try to do it tomorrow, so people can have a chance to look at them.
And do we, did we ever get an answer of his, to, as to any other municipalities that have used the model?
Oh, yeah, um, I spoke with Julie LeBranch, and she said in Rockland County, it's about twelve communities that have used the
Have adopted it?
Have adopted, and Exeter's working on theirs. I was surprised, because I hadn't heard anything.
Is that you, you working?
And she
Uh, I work with Jen, Jen did most of it.
Jen Matts, yeah, fun girl.
I'm listening to the IT man, I'm not a TV.
Okay. And Julie, by the way, LeBranch, who was involved with, in drafting regulations, said she'd be willing to come to a work session with Jamie from the Stormwater Center and help justify and explain any technical questions that the committee may have, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
So, at some point, if somebody could help me understand how a fifty-three seat restaurant only requires eighteen parking spaces. A pool.
We'll get, we'll get back to
Everyone's walking.
Walking. Walking.
Just like a town, well, it's really exposed to, you know, this end of town with the M two A zone is supposed to really be an extension of the downtown, that was the whole concept.
Pedestrian oriented.
Park at Rite Aid or, uh, Hell's Lars?
Good.
Well.
Private parking.
It all depends on the
No, but part of the, you know, we've talked about shared use, it could be that they rent some parking spaces from an adjacent property owner, and that might be a good example, they have all that back land that only they use during, you know, major funeral events and stuff, so.
And hopefully, they're successful enough so that that, this becomes a
An issue.
Challenge.
Yeah.
And maybe they'll, maybe their long-term solution is to cross the wetland and put additional parking out back.
Agreed.
That is a solution that has been discussed, I think the, well, I think they dismissed the idea cause of the cost of it, to do that.
Feels like we're being read there already.
Yeah, I mean, if you're not a viable business, you're never gonna be able to justify doing something like that.
But, the funeral home, they, they got a wetlands permit for their expansion, to allow the parking in the playground.
And they needed it on many occasions.
Yes, this worked well.
Absolutely.
So I just wanna, uh, note that I mentioned at the town council about the master plan review coming up, and, um, uh, I think the vice chair mentioned in, in the meeting that, that there's a chapter on energy,
Mm-hmm.
or there's an RSA that might lead to a chapter on energy.
There's, that's, except one of the options.
One of the options, and, uh, I think Councilor Weinstein might, might contact you for more info on what you're thinking there. She, she, uh, um, leads the
Committee.
The, one of the committees around energy, yeah.
Energy and environmental. So.
She, uh, she had some interest in knowing more about that, so, um, so I thought I'd just share that too, for that one, thank you. Thank you, yeah. Uh, and by the way, she, she was still looking for someone from the Planning Board to do that subcommittee, but I think, um, she was suggesting at the meeting that maybe since there was, you know, there wasn't, we weren't able to get someone over there, that they, they take a different tack on that, to, because they do need more, more folks to be engaged on that committee, so.
Does the, um, council have a particular time for that committee to provide a report, or what's the goal of the committee?
I'd have to ask her, I can take that back and, or just let her know that you're in, you know.
No, I'm wondering at the council level, wh- why did the council form the committee, and what is the council looking as a goal to come out of that committee?
Different, looking at different programs, you know, a variety of programs, between recycling, you know, and trying to promote programs in the town, uh, mainly at the town, at the municipal level, but I have a feeling it may branch out into, you know, promoting similar programs with private parties too. Things like Mr. Fox, or, you know, for composting, or, you know, getting waste out of our, the, you know, cause the wet waste is the highest cost in our, um, our waste management, for example, so if you can encourage composting instead, that cuts down on costs there in landfill, so. Just, they're looking at solar, I mean, anything under that umbrella, so, I think that, that's why there's an interest in the master plan chapter, right?
I think just randomly, the second person from the right should join that committee. Just popped into my head.
Here we have him on Stormwater Day.
No, I know, I know.
I'm gonna pay up on the student loan first.
Alrighty, alright, does anybody have anything else to add? Entertain a motion?
Wait, before we get to that, who's taking forward bills, um,
To the town administrator.
The town administrator.
I was gonna talk to my buddy.
Okay.
With respect to the DOT.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna talk about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's gonna be no action.
We don't have any influence, but
Well, we, we have had limited success with that agency in some of its projects.
It's, it's, it seems like our applicants are getting really abused.
It's an issue, it's a big issue.
Well, and most of our applicants are, are abutting for commercial, these state roads, with a one fifty-two, one oh eight.
Right.
Right.
So it's huge to our town, it's not like our downtown, you know, a highway bypasses our downtown, it's cutting right through it.
It's not just here, it's happening, it's, it's not a good situation over there.
I would say better to get it on record, so if it continues to get worse, at least there's something out there. Sure, other communities have, are, have complained as well.
Yep. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? I'll second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 At nine fifteen, by the way.
At nine fifteen, eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
Oh, eight fifteen, oh my god.
We haven't been here that long.
It's been a long day.